Good evening, everyone. Let me call the Burke County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Tuesday, January 20, 2015, to order. At this time, I want to welcome all of you for attending here. If you would, please silence all your mobile devices at this time. Check them and make sure they're down on vibrate. If I ask you to come to the table or the podium, if you would, speak real close to the microphones for me, and I would appreciate that. Madam Clerk, all the Commissioners are present except for Commissioner Carroll, who is ill and has been approved for his absence. County Manager, Deputy County Managers, and the Finance Director are here. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have our invocation this evening will be done by Chaplain Ken Day, and after the invocation, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance by Glen Alpin Cub Scout Pack Number 219. So we'll go ahead and have our invocation first, and then the Cub Scouts can come forward and do our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Let us pray together. Today is the day the Lord hath made. Rejoice and be glad in it. Oh, save now, oh beseech thee, oh Lord, send now prosperity to our community. Lord, we ask that you bless our county Commissioners spiritually, mentally, physically, and economically. We ask that you give them wisdom to make the right decisions for our community and give wisdom to all that work with them to do the same. Lord, we ask that you bring economic prosperity to our community. We also ask that you bring spiritual and moral prosperity to our community. We ask for reduction in crime, reduction in domestic violence, and just a perfect moral climate that can be with the sinful mankind. As your Psalmist says in the Psalm, "God be merciful to us and bless us and cause your face to shine upon us, that thy way may be known upon the earth, thy saving health among all nations." Let the people praise thee, oh God; let all the people praise thee. Oh, let the nations be glad and sing for joy, for thou shalt judge the people rightly and govern the nations upon the earth. Let the people praise thee, oh God; let all people praise thee. Then shall the earth yield her increase, and God, even our own God, shall bless us. God shall bless us, and all the ends of the earth shall fear him. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain Day. Cub Scouts?
[applause] [inaudible]
All right, gentlemen, if you'll wait right there, we're going to come down and take a picture with you, and that picture will be right over there on that wall for a very long time for you to look at. Parents, come on out front where you can get good pictures. You don't stay back there. Come on out there. Wayne wants you to make sure he can get in the middle there. All right, on three. One, two, three. [laughter] All right, gentlemen, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from December 1, 2014, which was our pre-agenda meeting, and the December 16, 2014 Board of Commissioners regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard Wayne's motion for approval. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands.
That'll be four to zero, Madam Clerk.
Our next item is the approval of the agenda. Gentlemen, at the last minute, we had to own the consent agenda to remove Deborah Ferris' appointment to the Library Board of Trustees for her failure to submit a reappointment application, so that would be the only change in the agenda.
That will be accepted.
You've heard Jeff's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That would be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to our presentations, we have two this evening. Our first presentation will be Burke County Public Schools' presentation of the financial data for the period ending December 31, 2014, presented by Keith Lawson from Burke County Public Schools Finance Officer. Hey, Keith.
Good evening, Chairman Carswell, County Commissioners, Clerk, County Officials. Thank you for allowing me to present our mid-year financial results for Burke County Public Schools tonight. Your first slide is a depiction of the estimated revenues for Burke County Public Schools for this fiscal year. As you can see, we estimate receipts of just under $102 million this year, with the line share of those, of that revenue being state funds. Our second-largest funding stream is you, the county, and you make up 14% of our funding. In total, of the projected $102 million in revenues, we have received, year-to-date or halfway through this year, 49.1%. So we're pretty much on target as far as projected revenues for the year. The second slide that you have are our local funding sources. As you can see, I have for reference historical funding for '11, '12, '12, '13, '13, '14, and then we have this year's total budget. Of our budget this year, $14.6 million. County revenue is 14.2 of that. Fines and forfeitures is an anticipated $380,000 of those revenues.
Keith, let me stop you there just a minute. Is fines and forfeitures down?
They, well, we just received, I think, fines and forfeitures again this past week. They're not down, and I do anticipate us hitting our mark of 380 by the end of the year. It's just the timing of when those revenues hit our books.
Okay.
They're not evenly distributed throughout the year.
Thank you, sir.
This year, we're reporting by purpose and level, and as you can see, in looking at the 5,000 Regular Instructional Services line item and following that all the way across, you can see our total budget this year basically is $6 million for that line item. First quarter expenses were $704,000. Second quarter was 1.7. The reason for the spike in the second quarter is that in the second quarter, we have a full quarter of pay for the teachers that are funded in local, because, as you know, teachers are 10-month employees. So that's why the second quarter spikes like that, as well as payment of teacher supplements. Our next line item is 6,000 Support and Development Services. Following that all the way across, we have a $9.8 million budget this year. It was 2.3 in the first quarter, 2.1 in the second. That's made up primarily of our operations of the schools and maintenance services. Then we have payment to other governmental units. Following that across, anticipated expenditure this year, $485,000. We've spent 55 first quarter, 146 the second. There again, that category is primarily funding of the charter schools, as well as the students that we have that live in Jonas Ridge, that we pay for those students to attend Avery County Schools. So following over to the far right, this is just a detail from the previous slide. Again, $7.1 million has been spent, which is roughly half of this year's anticipated budget. And then under the revenue category below, $7,67,000 is county revenue, 101,000 of that's fines and forfeitures. So halfway through the year, we're basically on target for revenues and expenditures.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Keith's report. Any questions for Keith?
None for me, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Keith, no questions. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
And thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Without objection, your report will be accepted. Moving on to item number 10 in the Presentations, WPCC Presentation of the Financial Data for the Period Ending December 31, 2014, that will be presented by Sandy Holman, Western Pembroke Community College Chief Financial Officer. Sandy?
Good evening, and thank you for having me. If you'll look at the first slide that you have, we'll look at the state budget first. We have a budget of $16,986,740 in total state budget for the year and have received $7,698,34 as of December 31, 2014. And as you can see, we've spent approximately 44.3% of our budget, and this is normal for this time of year. The next three columns are is our county budget, and as you can see, our county budget is a total of $2,431,329, which includes our county appropriations, rental income, and interest income, and we have expended $987,803, which is 40.6% of our budget, which again is normal for this time of year, because most of our expenses come in the third to the fourth quarter to make sure that we have enough funding available. Then in the last three columns, you'll see our institutional funding, and this is a budget of $9,106,105. Our institutional funds include financial aid for our students, grants that the college receives, self-supporting courses, our bookstore, and other miscellaneous accounts. Most of the accounts are restricted in nature just by their designation, and approximately 75% of this funding is student financial aid and our bookstore. If you'll look at the second slide, what we've done is taken our county budget and broken it down by the individual categories that you can see there. Salaries and benefits and utilities make up the majority of our county funding. Are there any questions about the county budget or any of our other funding revenue sources?
All right, gentlemen, any questions for Sandy? As always, Sandy, beautiful report. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Without objection, we will accept your report. Moving on to our next item is our scheduled public hearings. The first one is our Zoning Map Amendment, ZMA 2014-03, Adoption of the Morganton Extraterritorial Jurisdiction ETJ in Public Hearing, presented by Scott Carpenter, Deputy County Manager and Planning Director. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. We met and we discussed this at the pre-agenda meeting, so I'll try to be fairly brief tonight for you, and hopefully we'll have a few slides that will help give the overall picture of what's being requested tonight. So essentially, as you're aware, the City of Morganton was working on a zoning ordinance for over a year and a half. It was probably closer to two years, and as part of that process, they decided that it was time to relinquish part of their extraterritorial jurisdiction. The areas that they're relinquishing are shown on the overhead right there, and those are areas of pink. There's about 2,200 parcels in that area and 1,577 dwelling units. Most of those dwelling units, believe it or not, are single-family houses, and then there's a smaller minority of single-wide mobile homes and double-wide mobile homes. So on December 1, 2014, the city met to adopt the new zoning ordinance and to relinquish this 13 square miles of property or extraterritorial jurisdiction, which would fall under county jurisdiction. Now, what they did on December 1 was they allowed a timeframe of 60 days. So for 60 days, they agreed to leave the current zoning in place or until such time as the county adopted zoning. And at that time, they would relinquish their zoning jurisdiction. So tonight, if you, gentlemen, find in favor and vote to accept the ETJ and to put county zoning on those parcels, then that's what will be in effect immediately as of your vote. So if you choose not to, then essentially those areas become unzoned. Now, we went through a very thorough process as we were looking at the current land uses. If we could change that slide, let me see what that's showing me here. All right, so we did a very thorough existing land use analysis of the 13 square miles to see what zoning would match up best. The city essentially had what was known as a residential transitional zone assigned to it. For us, you would know that as R3 residential, which essentially allows single wides, double wides, duplexes, and just a few other types of allowances, but it really matches up closest to R3, R3 residential for county. Now, when we did the existing land use, we decided we'd go parcel by parcel, and we would look to see what type of land uses were out there to see if that was indeed the best type of zoning for all of these, was to essentially put R3 on it, because what we didn't want to do is wind up with a whole lot of parcels that are zoned incorrectly for the land use that's on the piece of property. One of the things you have to be cognizant of in planning is that this is a huge responsibility when you're empowered and you're entrusted to be allowed to essentially tell people what they can do with your land. And I think you all know we're very sensitive to that in the planning department, so we opened it up for 45, 60 days for residents to come in and to tell us what they think their land should be and why, and we worked through about 40 of those different cases, and we found a lot of them, yes, we were not quite right on, so we worked those out, and we're pretty confident that today the existing land use will match up to the types of zoning districts that we're proposing. So as far as existing land use goes, by far agriculture had the most acreage, 1,718. And keep in mind, when we do a land use analysis, that that does not include just vacant land. That's land, if it is pasture land, that's used actively for pasture or trees or silviculture or something. It has to be active. It's not just forests that are deforested from time to time to pay the taxes on the land. We also found that single-family residential consisted of 1,162 acres, so that was the next largest category of existing land use, and that was followed up with really what is called park, but that's one large parcel that happens to be owned by the state and is under state ownership and wildlife, and so we called that park. Then it was a single family and a little bit of commercial, not much, a little bit of industrial, mainly the Vulcan plant, and so we were very thorough, and we went through each of those, and then we assigned the proper zoning. So as far as the zoning goes and what we assigned, by far, we assigned R2 residential as the predominant type of zoning in the area around the ETJ. That's because so much of the land was either a single-family or double wides, and this zoning category also allows duplexes and a little bit of multifamily, but as you're aware, we don't have hardly any multifamily, true multifamily land uses in the county because those require heavier water and sewer type of systems to, you know, make feasible. The next kind of zoning that we put was R1. That was 1,878 acres, and then R3 was 1,505 acres. That took up a whole lot. Then we had one area that the city really didn't have a comparative with, and that was for Conservation District Estate, and that was 907 acres along the Catawba River. That allows one dwelling unit, single family, to five acres. And so we went through there. We used due diligence, and I think that it has come out very good. A lot of the cities, before they updated their zoning ordinance, a lot of their commercial, industrial, and those classifications were very similar to ours, so they had about the same category. So what's general business with ours was general business with theirs. Industrial was industrial. Office institutional was office institutional, and of course, we actually added more office institutional to those uses that were not zoned office institutional that actually are office institutional when you're looking at the existing land use. As far as the impacts go on county services and facilities, that's always a concern of citizens. As a matter of fact, we probably had 200 or 300 calls, I'm guessing, Pete, does that sound right, over a month, a month and a half. All of those were pretty much interested as what does this do to my taxes? Is it going up or whatever? And when we assured them that they were not going up, people were fine with that. As far as county services and facilities go, though, as far as transportation and roads, there'll be no impact there because the county does not own or maintain roads. Water and sewer, there'll be no impact with that because the parcels currently being served by Morganton will continue to be served by them. Solid waste, again, solid waste pickup is not provided to parcels within the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, so the residents would continue to use Burke County convenience centers or, of course, a private waste removal service. Land use planning and permitting will switch from the City of Morganton to Burke County. Building inspections and permitting, that will also switch from the City of Morganton to Burke County. And please do keep in mind that any permits that are active right now will continue to be serviced by Morganton that they have issued in the past until a CO or final is signed off on. Any new permits beginning tomorrow, if this is adopted, will be issued by the county, even on existing projects. Taxes, there should be no change in the tax rate unless there was a significant change in the zoning or something else, and that really isn't the case, so we don't expect any problems with that. And there'll be no changes in schools because the current school district boundaries will not change as a result of the proposed zoning. We do have to make sure that these changes are in conformity with a comprehensive plan, and in this case, it's the I-40 corridor study and plan that was adopted in 2003. Staff utilized the recommendations of this plan for density and the type of land use, and we also set forth the standards based on the criteria that I described earlier to you. So we believe that the proposed zoning is consistent with the I-40 corridor small-area plan. So in conclusion, gentlemen, the proposed Morganton ETJ rezoning is for the most minimal in nature. It seems to have been a very smooth transition. It's actually sort of amazing that we're adopting this many parcels of land and this many homes into an area and that we haven't received more concern or feedback, but maybe that says we did a good job in assigning the appropriate zoning as we went through the study. The parcels have been evaluated individually and area-wide, and the current land uses have been taken into consideration. The Morganton ETJ will be integrated with the appropriate county zoning jurisdiction that surrounds it, and the result is a blending of compatible land uses. The Planning Board met on November 20, 2014 on this matter, and they did vote unanimously 5-0 to recommend that you fine gentlemen approve the zoning map amendment. Staff also makes the same recommendation, and you would also need to adopt a consistency statement. So I'll read that at this time so that you all won't have to if you decide to adopt this, and the consistency statement reads, "The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Burke County comprehensive plan and the spirit and intent of the Burke County zoning ordinance. This map amendment will assist the citizens, the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Adjustment, and administrative officials of Burke County in guiding land development within the county. This map amendment is essential for the preservation and protection of the safety, health, and general welfare of the citizens of Burke County." And I will step back for your public hearing.
Stay there for 15 seconds and just summarize Morganton's rationale for relinquishing the territory in the ETJ.
I can't answer for Morganton. However, there have been some changes in land use laws and other things lately that make it very difficult for a city to now annex land into that jurisdiction. So what's required now is it used to be planners would devise plans, and you would force annex properties into a city or jurisdiction if they met criteria A, B, and C. Basically, do you have water provision, sewer provision, police, and fire, and a certain density per acre? Well, the rules have changed on how to do forced annexation. Now, you have to contact all of the individuals that own land within that area that you're planning on bringing into the city, and they have to vote, and it has to be a 60% vote that says, yes, we want to be a part of the City of Morganton. Morganton doesn't see that as happening now or any near time in the future. The other reason is a lot of the land that we took in is going to be hard to provide with those services, is what I'm told, water and sewer and the other types of density things that make you a town.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, I'm now going to open the public hearing for Zoning Map Amendment, ZMA 2014-03. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Madam Clerk, no one wants to speak to 2014. I will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, anybody have any questions for Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I have about three, and he answered part of the question. One of the questions I had, Scott, is the zoning from Burke County a little more lenient than what the city would be, or it, you know, does the residents of that area feel that is an advantage, or?
I think that the residents feel that dealing with Burke County, planning and zoning and building inspections is an easier process than approvals through the city. I would say that. We are probably more flexible in the way that our ordinances are written. They're not written so black and white as to where everything's just straight yes or no. There's a little bit of leeway for common sense in our ordinances, which I like and which I think needs to be there in order for things to run as smoothly as they do.
Another question I had, and we discussed it at our pre-agenda, but I'm still looking, and I looked down that list over the weekend, and there's several, and I don't know how many, but just on the first page or two, I counted eight or 10, lot sizes in there much less than one-half acre. And there's two questions to this, to where I'm going. And the first one is, by the way, Burke County owns one for .22. There's one in there for .17, which is about a sixth of an acre, and I think we have a little bit of conflict, and that's where I'm, I had the understanding that nobody Madam Clerk, I'm now going to open the public hearing for zoning map amendment ZMA 2014-03. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Madam Clerk, no one wants to speak to 2014. I will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, anybody have any questions for Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I have about three. And he answered part of the question. One of the questions I had, Scott, is the zoning from Burke County, a little more lenient than what the city would be? Or it, you know, does the residents of that area feel that is an advantage? Or...
I think that the residents feel that dealing with Burke County, planning and zoning and building inspections is an easier process than approvals through the city. I would say that. We are probably more flexible in the way that our ordinances are written. They're not written so black and white as to where everything's just straight yes or no. There's a little bit of leeway for common sense in our ordinances, which I like and which I think needs to be there in order for things to run as smoothly as they do.
Okay. Another question I had, and we discussed it at our pre-agenda, but I'm still looking, and I looked down that list over the weekend, and there's several, and I don't know how many, but just on the first page or two, I counted eight or 10. Lot sizes in there are much less than one-half acre. And there's two questions to this, to where I'm going. And the first one is, by the way, Burke County owns one for .22. There's one in there for .17, which is about a sixth of an acre. And I think we have a little bit of conflict, and that's where I'm, I had the understanding that nobody could put a individual home on less than a half acre. And we got acreage in there, and like I said, in Clemson, Burke County, that's, you know, not even a fifth of an acre.
I'm happy to answer that. We try to use common sense, but I know some people don't believe that when it comes to these non-conforming lots. Non-conforming lots, we always try to allow accommodation for them because they're existing and they're grandfathered. So, as long as they can provide water to the property through well or whatever and septic system, then all they have to do is come and ask for an adjustment on the setbacks of the property if that is a constraint. So, we're not going to tell you that your property is worth less, worth nothing. We're going to try to accommodate you and help you any way we can. Some lots just aren't buildable because they can't get a septic on it or a well. So, as far as the planning goes and the zoning, we always work to accommodate those. We've helped out dozens of people on these in the last year.
Well, and here's where I'm going with that.
Sure, yes, sir.
And I just want to make sure to protect our citizens. If you have a $200, $250,000 home and somebody besides you owns a .28 acres, which is about a quarter acre, and they can squeeze a mobile home or a manufactured home in there, and would that be allowed under those circumstances or under your zoning? Is that something that could be allowed and maybe not allowed? And what's the...
It could be. If your zoning jurisdiction allows single wides and they can meet the water and septic and ask for a variance on the size. So, yes, sir. But keep in mind, it's not necessarily the .7 acre lot size that can get you there. It could be a half acre. It's going to be the same use, single wide against the $250,000 home.
Well, as you mentioned, common sense. If you don't have road frontage, that creates a problem and all that that goes with it. And the last thing I did want to ask, I noticed in your report that some of the homes are already furnished with Morganton City Water, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you know what percentage of that? And are they willing, if it evolves to that point, are they willing to continue a water system to some people who may want to apply?
I was told by the city that all those people would receive the exact same deal that they have right now, that this will not change in any way from being in the ETJ versus in the city limits. I do not know the percentage of homes. It's not a great deal.
You got me? Any other questions? All right. What will be the pleasure of the board? And please be reminded, we'll need two motions.
Mr. Chairman, you want them both at once?
That would be fine, sir.
All right. To adopt the ordinance amendment or amend in the Burke County zoning map as it relates to zoning map amendment ZMA 2014-03, and that the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Burke County comprehensive plan and the spirit and intent of the Burke County zoning ordinance. This map amendment will assist all citizens, the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Adjustment, and administrative officials of Burke County in guiding land development within the county. This map amendment is essential for the preservation and protection of the safety, health, and general welfare of the citizens of Burke County.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard the manors' motions. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. All opposed. Madam Clerk, that will be four to zero. Scott, if you will give me just a moment. Thank you for the fine work you did on that, Scott. Peter? All right, Madam Clerk, did anybody sign up for comments?
Yes, sir.
All right, nobody signing up for comments. That will move us to the consent agenda. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board.
There was a hand, I don't know if she signed it.
I'm sorry.
Sir, I know this is very informal, and I do apologize. My name is Rebecca Poplin. I am a homeowner of...
Would you want to address us, right?
I had planned to because what I was told by the representative contradicted what Mr. Carpenter said, and I don't quite know what his second was.
Did you have a question for Mr. Carpenter, then, to clarify what you want to know?
I didn't sign up, and I didn't know what to do, and I'm just shutting up. So, I apologize.
I will give you three minutes if you want to come speak to us. Just announce again your name and your address for me when you get here.
Thank you so much. I apologize, and thank you very much. My name is Rebecca Poplin, and I live at 174 Oakdale Drive. On January the 15th of this year, I called and spoke to Jennifer Forney, who is the contact person on the letter I received at my home address. And I asked would this, how this would impact the property value of my home. And she stated, there would be no change except from the city to the county, there would be no change in the tax value of my property. And I'm sorry, I'm very nervous.
That's okay. Just relax.
My intent tonight, when I came in, I signed the little card and gave it 2K requesting that I speak. And she asked if I wanted to speak with Pete. And he introduced himself, I introduced myself, and I stated the exact same question that I stated to Jennifer. And I asked, in making this change in zoning, would there be, how would this impact the property value? And he said, ma'am, there's going to be no change, verbatim what Jennifer told me. In hearing Mr. Carpenter, my understanding is, Mr. Maynard's question, if you had a home value of $250,000, and then you had a parcel adjacent that may be a mobile home, I apologize, could be put in, could that happen? My understanding, Mr. Carpenter said, yes, which is contradictory to what Jennifer and Pete explained to me. I don't make a whole lot of money. I value my humble abode. And when I heard that statement, it was not what I had been told. So, I, again, shut down and didn't quite know what to do. But I'm requesting that, gentlemen, you readdress this because it doesn't appear that they're on the same page. And Mr. Taylor, I said, Mr. Maynard, I'm sorry. Mr. Taylor, I am so grateful that you brought this up because, yes, I'm very concerned about my tax value. It's all I have, and I don't want to do anything to jeopardize it. I know I've taken more than three minutes, and thank you all so much. So, I would just, I don't quite understand that Jennifer and Pete told me something that contradicted Mr. Carpenter's statement because he, and please correct me if I'm wrong, he said potentially it could affect the value. And that isn't prudent for Burke County citizens. It's not in my best interest to sit here and say, yeah, this is great, it's not going to affect me, when Mr. Taylor's question pointed to the fact that it potentially could. So, where do we stand on this? And they did a great job. So, anyway, thank you so much for listening, and I don't quite know what to do since you went ahead and said it was okay. Am I making sense, sir?
Yes, you are. And what I'm going to ask you to do is, Mr. Carpenter is standing right behind you. If you would, he is more than willing to step right outside that door and do more explanation, and then he can come back to us if anything needs to be brought to us.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Can I say something on that, too?
Sure. Come on.
I was at the understanding, I don't want to get into a lot.
Let's go ahead and announce who you are.
I'm Alan Roper. I live on Pete Britton Road. I was at the understanding, the letter we got, we was going to be able to come up here and discuss how we wanted our property zoned, the way the letter wrote, was written.
The letter from the county?
It was, I think it was from the county. The letter I got, I thought it was an understanding that you could come up here and it was going to be a discussion, the people that wanted to talk about it, how they wanted their property zoned, and that's the reason I'm here.
Okay. I think I got the same letter that you did. Anyway, Rick, I'm going to ask you to do the same thing. Scott's standing back there. Please, if you two would just meet him outside, and then he can get back with us.
I don't know how he zoned it, but it's probably not the way I was wanting to talk to him.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, now I think we can move on to the consent agenda. Mr. County Manager?
All righty, gentlemen. You've got, I believe, 10 items on your consent agenda. Clerk, appointment, reappointment to Library Board of Trustees. That was with the removal of Deborah Ferris. Reappointment, we have not received her application. Clerk, removal from Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Clerk, Board of Health appointment. Clerk, appointment to the Tourism Development Authority. Number five, communications, approval of sole source purchase for Motorola Radio Tower Channel. Number six, community development, approval of Partif grant for Burke County Overlook Park. Number seven, FM, Fire Marshal, I'm sorry, didn't click. Appointments or reappointments to the local firefighters relief fund. Tax EMS collections report for November 2014. Number nine, tax collector report for December 2014. And number 10, tax release refund report for December 2014. That concludes your consent agenda items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Gentlemen, you've heard the report with the County Manager. What's your pleasure on the consent items?
Motion to approve, as per Mr. Chairman.
All right, you've heard the motion from Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Be four to zero, Madam Clerk. Moving on to our items for decision, our first item is EMS. It's an award to bid for a 2015 Type 1 ambulance presented by Greg Curry, Emergency Services Director. Hey, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're well aware from pre-agenda meeting, this year EMS asked for the purchase of a new 2015 Type 1 4x4 ambulance. We, when we put it out to bid, we specifically asked anyone interested in presenting a bid that they offer a bid for a Dodge make with the same specs, as well as a Ford make with the same specs. We had, the bid opening was on January 6th. We had two companies actually submit bids, both of them did submit bids for a Ford as well as a Dodge. The low bid was from Northwestern Emergency Vehicles in Jefferson, North Carolina. Their bid for the Ford F-550 was $176,944. Their bid for the 2015 Dodge 5500 was $180,420. And actually, both of those bids came in under what the other competitor submitted. My recommendation would be based on maintenance histories here in Burke County, as well as other places, that we award the bid for the new 2015 ambulance to Northwestern Emergency Vehicles for a 2015 Dodge 5500 four-wheel-drive Type 1 ambulance, and I'd be more than happy to answer your questions.
All right, gentlemen, questions for Greg?
I got all of mine answered in pre-agenda.
Okay, with no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I moved to award the bid for the 2015 Dodge 5500 4x4 Type 1 ambulance to Northwestern Emergency Vehicles at a cost of $180,420.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that'll be four to zero. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Paul, do they need to do anything about the additional monies to pay for that?
I was thinking the same thing.
Since the bid's over, the amount including the budget purchased ambulance, I think it'd be appropriate to identify where the additional funds would come from. Either funds that we're getting from the contract with Blue Ridge Healthcare, or lack of anything else, fund balance.
So, if they amended the motion to utilize unanticipated revenue from other sources for EMS, and the amount to make the difference up, that would be sufficient?
Yeah, I think we just include that in the motion to take it from the unbudgeted revenue from Blue Ridge Healthcare for EMS would work. Save having to use fund balance.
Jeff, would you amend your motion to include that?
Yes, sir. Amended per Mr. Ames' comments and managers.
All right, you've heard the amended motion. Gentlemen, all in favor of the amended motion, please raise your right hands. Madam Clerk, that'd be four to zero. All right, moving on to reports and comments. Start with our favorite barrister.
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Wayne?
No comments.
Maynard?
Ditto.
Jeff?
None, sir.
Mr. County Manager?
Yes, sir, just a couple. Folks may have seen in the newspaper an article about the public meeting, the state to hear concerns over the proposed shooting range that the state is considering constructing. The North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission will hold an informational meeting from 6:30 to 8:30 PM on February 18th at the City of Morganton Municipal Auditorium in Morganton, comma, it's located at 401 South College Street. The meeting is being held to discuss the shooting range proposed to be built on the Lenville Track of the Pisgah Game Land in Burke County. So, anyone that's interested, they need to mark their calendar for that. Mr. Chairman, myself and Vice Chairman Abley went with a group today down to Charlotte to Siemens to see how they are doing an apprentice program to take people and help them train for high-skill jobs with their company. We were accompanied by representatives from Leviton, Geiger, the Burke County School System, Caterpillar, Continental, Valdez Weavers, Viscatech, Western Piedmont Community College, and again, myself and Mr. Abley, as well as BDI employee Sarah Chester. Again, this is to introduce our manufacturers to an apprenticeship program and how it's being operated in another county that we may want to consider if we are able to receive the Golden Leaf Grant funds for the expansion of the Megatronics program at Western Piedmont Community College. And it was quite interesting and helpful to do that today, and I'm certainly very pleased with the kind of support that we got from our local manufacturers and going down and spending pretty much a whole day down there. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, I received a letter today from the Burke County Board of Elections asking Senator Daniel, Representative Blackwell, myself, Chairman of the Republican Democrat Party to attend a meeting on February the 10th at 10 o'clock at the Board of Elections. If you recall, there were some election law changes in 2013, and if the legislature has opportunity to create an early primary in 2016, or even a split primary, if they do that, that will cause some restructuring of the Board of Elections on how they handle our elections. So, I would encourage y'all to call Debbie or Eugenie and kind of get as much information or seek out as much information as you can. And then, we need probably to talk with Warren and Hugh to see what might happen if this does occur, and how much money this might cost us if this election does go to a split primary or an early primary in 2016. So, put that on your radar, if you would, take advantage of getting that information together. Also, at the, as you are aware, I attended the NCAA legislative conference last week. There was a number of proposals that came through. The top five proposals that came out of that meeting were posted. Sharon will be doing an article, I think, pretty soon, a local article about...
Sharon will be doing an article, I think, pretty soon, a local article about the proposals that came out from that meeting. So I encourage you to check the NCAA website and see the top five that came out. That was a weighted vote. Everybody put in a secret ballot as to what they thought their top five would be, and then staff weighted those out, and I didn't even know what the top five were until Sharon and I were discussing it and took a look at it on the website. So I encourage you to take a look at that. All right, Kay, do you have any comments for us?
Just a couple, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm pleased to report that Commissioner Taylor completed his two clock hours of ethics training as required by general statutes last week, and I will be attending the 2015 Annual City and County Clerks Conference Wednesday through Friday. That's for continuing education.
All right, our vacancy announcements?
Okay, we have vacancies on the following boards and committees, the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Board of Equalization and Review, City of Morganton ETJ for the Board of Adjustment, Voluntary Agriculture Board, Library Board of Trustees, Burke County Parks and Recreation, and we also have the following state vacancies, if I can get my mouse to work. North Carolina Museum of Art Cemetery Commission.
The Environmental Management Commission, and the North Carolina Finance Agricultural Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And for those of you that are watching from home, I encourage you to take advantage of any of these boards or committees that you would like to volunteer for. That's just a good citizen when you can volunteer for either one of these boards. Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, do we have need for a closed session?
It's short.
Short. All right. We do have a need for a closed session to discuss threat or pending litigation, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to discuss economic development matters, or to discuss personnel matters pursuant to the general statutes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Wayne. Let's take a about a five-minute break before we go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we adjourn.
We had a proper motion to come out of closed session, no decisions were made, and we have a motion by Maynard to adjourn. All in favor? Forward to that. Madam Clerk, officially.